Tiana, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Proceed, Mr. President.
I will now call back to order the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education Meeting for June 21st, 2022. At this point, I'd like to ask all members of the Board, Administration, and Community to please stand at attention, facing the flag with your right hand over your heart to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to everyone who is joining us in person watching our RAR meeting tonight on the livestream. As I announced in a letter to the community last Friday, tonight will be my last regular Board of Education meeting, as I intend to step down from my position effective June 27th, 2022, when I will submit my letter of resignation. I've accepted a new career opportunity, one that will require significantly more international travel, and I'll no longer be able to serve in this role with the energy and time that our community deserves. By now, you've likely realized that I'm not there in person tonight for my last meeting, as I recently tested positive for COVID and am isolating at home. This pandemic has upended so many aspects of our lives during my time on the Board, so the irony that this is changing the plans for my last meeting is not lost on me or the English major that I'm lucky enough to be married to. It has been a privilege to serve on the Board over the last several years during such a uniquely challenging time in our history. It has deepened my appreciation for how important our schools are in making Lake Forest such a special community to call home. It is also deepened my appreciation for the work that our talented and dedicated teachers, staff, and administrators do in support of Lake Forest kids. Lastly, it's given me an appreciation and insight for the generations of parents and community members who have donated their time and talents to supporting our schools, either through serving on the APT, Spirit, volunteering, or serving on this Board. The culture across District 67 is one that has been built over decades. To that last point, if there are any community members watching that have considered serving on the Board but are maybe on the fence, I strongly encourage you to pursue it. Our schools are better as a result of you getting involved, and I think you'll find it extremely rewarding as well. So, I'd like to close my final report with a big thank you to everyone, from current and past members of the Administration, to the teachers and staff, to my fellow Board members that I've learned so much from and enjoyed debating and collaborating with over the years, and to the community that elected me and entrusted me in this role. I am very grateful and will remember it always. And with that, I'd like it to turn it over to Superintendent Montgomery for his report and an update on the year in review. Matt?
Justin, if you don't mind, before we do that, I'm gonna offer the Board an opportunity to share some parting words, if they have any, that they would like to share with you. All right, Justin, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve together on the District 67 Board these past three years. Little did you know when you volunteered that you would not only join the Board but become President just in time to deal with a pandemic like we have never seen before. It has been a difficult few years, but your leadership has been steady and strong. Wishing you the best and the brightest future, and thank you for your service to District 67 and our Lake Forest community. I'd just like to take a moment to express my gratitude to you for stepping up to take on the role of Board President during a time that was truly unprecedented in terms of the many and varied decisions that were before us, the ever-changing context in which we were serving together during the pandemic, and you handled the role with decorum, communicated effectively with community members as needed, were always mindful of keeping our community informed and inviting them to engage with us. I wish you well in your new job and whatever adventures the future may hold for you and your family, and I hope you all have a lovely summer.
Justin, we started together before we were on the Board together at the caucus, and little did we know that we were going to have to serve as well as recruits. So, once we recruited people, we were asked to serve. So, we came on the Board together. You served as an amazing leader for us, kept the Board focused on what we needed to do, and I will miss your company at our meetings. So, thank you so much for your service.
Justin, just want to say fair winds and following seas. It's a pleasure serving with you, and good luck to you in the future, and we'll see you around town for sure.
A big thank you from me for your steady and patient leadership, especially as a new Board member. In the past year, I've learned quite a bit from watching you and from talking to you about what's expected of Board members. It's been a great privilege, and we will miss you. You're welcome to come to all the Board meetings in the future if you want.
I just realized I was on mute. Thank you. I had a little trouble catching all of that, Emily, but...
Sorry. I was totally ad-libbing it. Thank you, Justin. Is it much better?
Much better, yeah.
Long story short, I'm gonna, we're gonna miss you, Justin, and you're more than welcome to come back anytime. But, just to recap, I've learned so much from you in just my short time here. You have such a patient, calming demeanor about you. I know that this has not been an easy year, and, you know, we're gonna miss you, and I wish you all the best, and I really do hope you come to meetings from time to time, just to say hi. But, take care. Again, don't be a stranger.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you all so much. Be careful what you ask for, though. If I come to meetings, public comment is gonna, gonna, gonna go flaming high. It's been an absolute delight to serve with all of you guys, and again, this is not at all how I envisioned the end of my service to go, but it has just been an honor to serve with all of you, as well as our former Board members, Jeff Volker and Dr. Lemke and Mike Borkowski as well. So, it's just been an incredible experience and one that really, really helps you appreciate how special this place is to live. So, thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Tonight's report, I'm presenting to you, a little bit more formal in nature, and I can see Justin this way a little easier as well. But let me begin with much of the success that we will be, or I'll be sharing with you tonight, is due to the leadership from the Board, as well as Justin's leadership as Board President, and, Justin, from the bottom of my heart, I wish you the very best in your new endeavor, and thank you for your support. As I onboarded this first year, it has been one heck of a first year, and thank you for being with me along the way. So, as I begin my conversation with you tonight, I want to begin with what keeps me grounded, which is my family, because they first and foremost are what is my driving motivator for everything I do, and the fact that we have transitioned from living in Ohio all of our lives to Lake Forest has been no small feat this year. It has been difficult, to say the least, at times, but your support along the way has meant the world to me and has made this transition as seamless as it could be, in spite of the fact that my mother still cries every time I talk to her. But that is a sign of a good mother, at least that's what I say to myself as I'm trying to console her. And my babies have truly begun to flourish as upcoming eighth grader, oh, I had to get help last, okay, so last week, I'm gonna do it this time, eighth grader, seventh grader, fourth grader, and third grader. And Dr. McQ had to help me with that last week, which was mildly embarrassing, and I did not do their ages because I didn't want to get quizzed at home. So, I just want to tell you how thankful I am of that experience. As I talk, we're gonna be focused tonight on what we accomplished and then where we're going. So, I'll touch on a summary of the entry plan that I laid out way back at my in-person interview on April 1st of 2022, or 1, 21, yeah, 2021, as well as just recapping this first year and then talking about progress and next steps. When I laid out that entry plan, I talked about focus on engagement with the Board of Education and the staff, connecting with the community, and listening and learning from students. This first year was focused on listening, and I expressed early on in the interview process that I did not think that you should hire me if you wanted me to come with all of the answers, but rather come to you with a lot of questions and listen and observe, and then take that information after that listening process, and then move forward with the will of the community, and hopefully I have been able to, or you believe I've been able to do that this first year. The engagement process has been incredible, so whether it has been with individual Board members, the separate Boards, or the Boards together, as well as dozens of individual meetings with our 700 staff members. That process lasted all year and will continue, but the one-on-one conversations I had with people who were willing to give their time this year, asking simple questions, "Tell me your overall impression of the district or districts, what you think we're doing exceptionally well, and how you think we can grow." I also asked staff members what their hopes are for me as my tenure continues as a leader to serve them. We also spent a great deal of focus this first year on regular and consistent communications, and Melissa and her team have helped made that possible, building out what we're able to do in terms of connecting with all of our stakeholders, and I am proud of the work that Melissa and her team has done, and I'm excited about what the future holds in the area of communications to exceed all of our stakeholders' expectations. Some of the special moments for me was when we started to do the 67 staff spotlight, or the student spotlights, forgive me, and bringing the kids in and seeing what they were doing and celebrating them grounds me in my decision-making process and grounds our work and why we're here. Sometimes we get lost in the everyday happenings that we lose focus, and I think those spotlights are something to be tremendously proud of. The picture on the lower portion of the screen are our retirees, for our retirees from this school year, and I had the opportunity to spend time with most of them this first year, and I will tell you that this cohort was a phenomenal group of individuals, and they will be sorely missed, and I was happy that we were able to recognize them appropriately just a few short weeks ago at the end of the school year. Outside of the school network, there was a great deal of time this first school year connecting with the community, and there were countless meetings, one-on-one and in small groups, to get their feedback about overall impressions, what we're doing well, and what we can grow. We also learned a great deal of information from the Portrait of a Learner Design Process with over 150 of our stakeholders from not only District 67, but also 65 and 115 that came together to create the Portrait of a Learner, which I will present to you in a few subsequent slides. With Melissa's help, we also started the Let's Talk Series, where we brought in our community to find a different place to engage around hot topic issues from this podium where I'm standing. So, we saw an area of growth where we needed another venue or another medium for our community to come in and talk about topics that were interesting to them outside of here in Board meetings. They're always welcome here, but we wanted a more intimate setting where we could answer their concerns or hear their thoughts about topics such as COVID, social media, food services. Those are topics that we focused on this school year, and there'll be more. That series will continue because of the feedback that we also, that we gathered this school year. I also spent a great deal of time with the APTs, the Spirit, as well as other key community groups such as LEED, Croya, and the Rotary. I'm actually presenting the President's Corner tomorrow at the Rotary Meeting at 7:30, if you're interested. I'd love to see you bright and early. It is a wonderful group of folks in the community who are doing good things in both Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. These are just some images of, I think the top left is an All-In Admin Meeting, the Let's Talk picture around food services, which partnered with Cabinet as well as Quest and the APT to talk about food service and where we're headed, and then the flagpole at DPM that we're most proud of. A third area of key group that I spent some time with this year was getting to know our students, whether it be student focus groups, the Portrait of Learning Design Team, attending student events, lunches with students, as well as shadowing students in DPM. I had an opportunity to really get to know our kids this year, or our students, and my hope is that those relationships will just continue, and as they matriculate from 67 to 115, I will be a familiar face where those relationships will continue to grow. Just a shout-out to the mayor for being a part of our opening day. That was the first time he's ever done something like that. He's been invited, and hopefully he will join us in future years. Just a note about the team on the, the team of eighth graders who were a part, or seventh graders, seventh and eighth graders, that were a part of our Portrait of a Learner process, their voices were some of the most coveted voices of the 150, and what we were able to hear and learn from them was powerful, where you could hear a pin drop when they shared their input on what their hopes and aspirations are for the future of this district or these districts. And I couldn't have been prouder of hearing their voices in front of other adults and seeing them in that leadership role. As I process everything that I learned this first year, here are some key learnings. There is a desire to continue our vision for excellence. So, we redefined, defined it a little bit this year with our Portrait of a Learner, but there's a commitment to, we want to continue that vision for many years to come, and there is a deep community commitment to quality education. With that, I say that as you're looking across this nation and districts, there are varying levels of community engagement, and one of the areas that made me believe that Lake Forest would be a good fit for me and my family, my prized possessions, is this community or these communities' commitment to quality education. Another theme that resonated with me was that there is untapped potential. So, the resources, the willingness to continue to improve, and the population that we serve, there is a secret sauce here where there's no ceiling, and that's a pretty exciting place to work. It's an exciting place to lead, to sandbox, because I believe if you can't figure out education in an environment such as ours, it cannot be figured out, because we have everything in place to do amazing work, and I believe that we are on, we have been and continue to be on the pathway to evolve and to progress. So, when I look at top priorities for me as a leader, it would be in the buckets of trust, vision, and around students, which is balancing the student needs and academics with a focus on well-being. As I think through everything I've learned, I wrote a little bit about hope a couple, maybe a month ago or something, but I want you to know that of these hundreds of conversations I have, my level of hope is exceptionally high, and it is an exciting time to be in a leadership role in general, anywhere across the country in schools, because we have the opportunity to learn from the pandemic and see where we want to go, what worked, what didn't work, how can we reimagine, and I am filled with hope as we work together to define what that is. I've spoke about trust to the Board and to our staff internally, as well as externally, about we need to continue to build a cult, a culture of trust, whether that be streamlining the shared services experience, which we spent a great deal of time on this year and will continue to work on, regular communication engagement on all levels, because as I talk through those conversations, trust was an area that I think everywhere was eroded based on our lived experiences through the pandemic. So, that being an area of focus. For external and internal is a commitment, and I think through our transparent communication, we can build strong relationships that will ultimately yield trust, but as you know, trust can't, it takes a long time to build, but just a short period of time to erode, so we need to continue to put that as a focus for all stakeholders and all levels. The second bucket I have defined is a shared vision for the future. So, you know that the portrait is complete, but now we are going to look at that strategic plan, and 67 has a robust strategic plan. I was most impressed with that a year ago when I was trying to dive deep into the district. Now, it's time to, this fall, look at the strategic plan and see how the portrait fits into it. Are there any gaps that we need to build out? I do not believe it would be a complete overhaul, but we do need to take a careful look at it and see how it fits or complements the portrait. We're also talking about reimagining learning spaces. So, how are we looking at the cafeteria at DPM, potential additional space at Cherokee, how are we looking at spaces at Sheridan and Everett to look at areas where we can reinvent or expand to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students now and into the future? And also, and you'll, you'll hear this thread of communication through this, we need to make sure that we're communicating what that vision is to all of our stakeholders. A few slides on the work of the portrait, and I know we've talked about it a lot this year, but it was an exceptionally rewarding experience and one that I will not forget anytime soon, because the idea that we came together as communities and reimagined what our focus was, was probably the highlight for me of this year, and you can see through these images, through the ink factory, how we went through the process in a most comprehensive way to figure out what competencies resonated with us as community members of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood. And the work, or the final product that we came up with, the portrait, is something that I am most proud of, and I hope you can be as well. The six competencies that we looked at that made the final cut were critical thinking, confidence, communication, adaptability, citizenship, and empathy, with empathy getting the most votes of any competency of where we believe as communities we should be focusing our learning for students. I also want to put the caveat here, and it's not really a caveat, it's just an acknowledgement that the core academic skills were embedded in this process. So, this is not abandoning the core competencies or academic skills, this is complementing those, and I think sometimes when you see the competency and you say, "Oh, my goodness, where is the basics that the students have to know?" That is a given, that we are doing that on a regular basis. This is looking at core competencies to take above and beyond that academic foundation to ensure that we have students that are going out into the world who can demonstrate success from a whole-child perspective. And the fact that we partnered with Lake Bluff, as well as the high school, creates some opportunity for synergy of how those students matriculate, regardless of where they're starting from, to the, the picture is to emulate the senior star as you walk in the entryway of LFHS, because at graduation day, the students line up with the senior star being at the center, and that's where they progress or process over as they go out to start their graduations ceremony. So, all students are leading or on a pathway to the senior star, and that's why that image resonated with our stakeholder group, to just give you a little bit of a background. The bucket around, this is the third bucket, which is meeting the students' needs in academics, life, and wellness, we are looking at many different areas to advise us, so whether it be insight and feedback from student focus groups, student surveys, other qualitative or quantitative feedback to capture their voice, as I said before, looking at learning spaces, and then what courses we're offering are extracurriculars, and then ultimately, consistent and regular communication around that. There's some exciting things on the horizon, whether it be reevaluating our ELAs curriculum, our new math curriculum at DPM, as well as infusion of innovation across all levels to ensure that we're meeting the students' needs in the area of STEM as well. We've been doing some site visits, and last week's update, I shared some site visit sheets for you that summarized some themes from our San Diego visits. We visited High Tech High and then Design Campus 39. It is my commitment to you is that when we go out and we go see or learn other learning spaces, we will report out to what those themes were. So, we had a team of both teacher leads, as well as Board members, and principals, and Cabinet members who went on this first trip, and you can see the themes that resonated with those. We all put this information together in one document, and what we saw was project-based learning happening at all levels. We saw not only project-based, but project-based learning that was connected to real life. And some people would just do the projects for the sake of projects. That's not what we saw. We saw project-based learning that was immersed in real-life application. There was design thinking in both site visits, and that's something that's really resonating with us right now about the design thinking process, and is it integrated into our teaching or not. Collaboration was evident everywhere, and they had tech and gear. I think 67 is in a great place in terms of tech and gear because of the foresight of this Board, as well as your predecessors and the leadership team, but you can see in High Tech High and in Design Campus 39, which is the second slide I just showed you, similar, similar themes regardless of it being a K8, so Design 39 was a K8 learning space. High Tech High had both K8 and 912, but we just visited the 912 campus. Something interesting about Design 39 is that, and this is a little cheesy, but it works for them. They don't call their teachers "teachers," they call them "learning experience designers." They want to reinforce the fact that the teachers are no longer the sages on the stage, but they are the guides on the side. So, they are facilitating the learning experience, as opposed to sitting in front of the classroom and it being just imparting knowledge from the teacher to the student through osmosis. They saw a culture, or we saw a culture of collaboration there. Their learning spaces were exceptionally flatter. Their learning spaces were exceptionally flexible and they monitored their progress. You are what you measure. And they measure three attributes: knowledge, skills, and the dispositions or attitude and behavior of their students. I walked away with a lot of ideas. I, this is my first time to Design Campus 39, my second time to High Tech High. I was worried that at High Tech High, I would not be as excited because it's my second visit. I was as energized as ever. I told the team when we went, them sharing with each other what didn't resonate with them is as important as what did. And wherever we go for visits now or in the future, we are not going to copy anyone else's work. We are merely ideating around concepts that may or may not help build us a future that is something that we can support. Again, my commitment as the leader is the boards are investing in these types of experiences. It's our job to share out what our findings were and make meaning of those visits. What's next? I talked about updating the strategic plan in tandem with our portrait or complementary in our portrait. We will continue to analyze the site visits that we saw and plan future ones. You know with the robust reports that Dr. McHugh has approached or shared this year, we have the new math curriculum starting and we are continuing to evaluate ELA curriculum, K8. And that is hopefully going to be wrapped up next spring. And then we are putting a great deal of energy on creating a culture of trust and success, which means that we are looking at how we can increase trust across all levels of the organization to ensure that we are swimming in the same direction and that people have the psychological trust where they can come to us with all ideas without fear of being shut down or not included or not listened. And that psychological safety takes time to build up because the teacher voice, the staff voice is critical, as is the student voice, to make sure that we don't have a top-down, solely a top-down approach of how we are transforming the district. And when I say transforming, that's not because the district isn't doing amazing things. That's to continue to evolve and to perform at a level of excellence that this community expects and that we are honored to be able to serve. That concludes what I have to share with you. I am willing to entertain any questions if you have any. I just want to make sure I'm affording you that opportunity.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions from the board for Matt about his superintendent's report?
I have questions, but.
I, I just wanted to say thank you. Obviously, there was a lot of work put into that presentation and it took me back to the beginning of the year. It's really nice to see how far we've come. Sometimes progress can feel frustrating and slow. But that's quite a lot that you and your team have accomplished this year. And so I just want to say a big thank you to everyone who, who put in all of the work on behalf of our kids. I think we can't say it enough, so we appreciate it.
Thanks, Annie. And I just want to give a shout out to those people sitting at that table over there because I am nothing without them. And don't forget Jordan. They support everything and I don't want to take credit. They deserve the credit.
I also want to thank the admin team and Dr. Montgomery for this presentation. You've done a great job. It reinforces that we selected the right person. So now to be good cop to bad cop, but not really. Shared vision, portrait of a graduate, portrait of a learner. You and I have discussed this before. You've incorporated 65 into your discussions in your meetings with that. You're also looking for insights and feedback from students as well to incorporate that into what we do. And have you and the superintendent at 65 discussed how we're getting feedback from the younger kids, K through four? Or is that mostly through what teachers need? Or do they have a voice in this process?
And so for the portrait design process, it was limited to DPM students.
Okay.
Because of the type of experience we had. But the feedback that we're getting from the younger ages are either interactions that I'm having with them or the teachers are having with them. For example, the superintendent lunches. It was amazing to just visit with them and get their feedback. I know Jeff is in elementary classrooms all the time. So we're collecting that from a one-on-one experiential process when we're out and about. Or what the teachers are sharing with the building principals that are then filtering back up to us. So their voice is captured, but not in the same, it wasn't in the same way as our DPM students just because of the nature of how the meetings were structured.
And do we have a way to capture some of those voices through a different structure of some sort? Or plans to, through teachers, through principals?
I think it looks a little different at each of the buildings. First, we have the data from the surveys. We give the CSCI survey to third and fourth graders, so we get data from them there. And then some of the schools have student leadership teams. I know that's a way for kids to give their voice that goes to the principal and the teachers there. That works its way back to us. I don't think we have a formal instrument at this point right now, but I think we're getting a lot of qualitative feedback from them. I think we have a pretty good idea of what they're looking for. And I think it will go well with the, I think a lot of what the elementary kids want is what the middle school kids want too.
You also talk about reimagining learning spaces. I know we're going to be tight at Sheridan with a new preschool, is it a new preschool? Reimagining that. What are we reimagining for our other buildings? Is it just Sheridan that's going to be a little tighter?
No, so Sheridan would be an opportunity to explore the courtyard in more depth because it is tight, especially with the additional preschool. In all of the buildings, regardless of new space, it would be, I would start looking at the media centers and the libraries and seeing, are they meeting our needs? How can those existing spaces be explored to maybe make it more 21st century? Those, that's where I would start at first. But then when we look at exploring additional square footage, if needed, Cherokee is on the horizon for the first discussion. Sheridan would be the next discussion with the courtyard. And then we would look at Everett as the third. DPM, those conversations, there's space within that building that could be reimagined, such as the lecture hall is the first one that comes to mind.
Were there any?
Is that what it's called? I'm sorry, is it the lecture hall? Lecture hall.
And did you see anything at Design Center 39 that we could incorporate here in terms of redefining those spaces?
Yes, so many things. And I can give you like a stack of pictures, yes.
So many things.
Awesome, thank you.
From furniture to space. It's, it's, can be small things such as furniture. So for example, one thing that comes to mind was, so these are maybe fourth graders. They, their tables, they flip to vertical, so they go from horizontal to vertical. And then they become little whiteboard presentations. So the kids were moving them around, flipping them up. And then they were doing presentations and working through problems throughout the room. And it changed in a second, just like boom, we're doing this. The, they use that furniture in such a way where it's part of the learning apparatus, where they're creating a whole bunch of extra free space. They're in small group settings. They're able to process out their thinking through the whiteboard. But it's not holding a whiteboard, there's, the table is actually flipping. So that's a small example, but we saw many examples. Open space, the, the flexible furniture gives you the ability to create open space, which allows for more collaborative learning. The other thing that I walked away with, and it's not trite, it was powerful, at least from my vantage point, is that they start, particularly in High Tech High, they start with blank walls every year. So they're not doing bulletin boards, they're not doing any other type of signage. They're blank walls. And by the end of the year, they have built artifacts from students' learnings that is everywhere you can look and imagine as examples or artifacts of the learning that occurred that school year. And then at the end of the school year, they rip it all off and they start again. So the body, the, the work of, the body of work is the students' learning. And you don't have to wonder because everywhere you look are examples of how they have demonstrated mastery within the lessons that they were learning.
Yeah, it was very powerful walking down the halls. We were told at Design 39, there's nothing on the walls that isn't either student-created or particularly relevant and absolutely necessary to a particular thing that they're working on at the time. And so it, it was actually in some ways a lot more sparse than what you might interpret. And you know, it didn't appear to be resource-heavy. And yet there were all these amazing spaces where creation and things could be done. And there was a level of empowerment to the students, I would say, that was marked. Kids independently driving their own learning and their work and, and what they were working on and able, with the ability to articulate that and what they were doing.
There'd be student work and then a QR code. And I would click on the QR code and it's the students in the group explaining the project. So there were QR codes everywhere and it was videos of kids expressing their learning, which was like, we do that, but to the degree in which they do it, it was powerful that that's just how they do their work. And that resonated with me, as well as the freedom that would probably make some people pucker. But they have, there's no lines, there's no, like, kids are just responsible from going to point A to point B. It may be on a different portion of the campus and the kids just do it. It's a culture of showing ownership of time, space, and, and products that you need to produce. Again, we are not trying in any of these visits to copy and paste. We are exploring other spaces to reaffirm what we're doing, to see what we like and also what we don't like. So we continue to lead the pack in excellence across the country with the educational experiences we're offering.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Seeing none. Thank you, Matt. And as expressed before, thank you to the whole team for a very impressive year in terms of where we started and where we're ending.
Thank you, sir.
At this point, we will move to our first opportunity for public comment and public participation. We'll now hear public comments, subject to our policy 2-230. We welcome public attendance and participation at all of our meetings. I will reiterate a couple of our guidelines that we have. First and foremost, this is the first of two opportunities for public comment within our agenda. Please ask that this opportunity for public comment be reserved to items that are actually on the agenda and action items for this evening. The second opportunity for public comment can be about any topic that the members of the public would like to address the board about. A couple of guidelines with respect to public comment. First, any interested speakers should please state their name before addressing the board. Every one will be granted a maximum of three minutes each to provide comment on school district matters. Our board clerk, Tiana, will be monitoring time and will advise when you've reached your three minutes. If you do have any sort of letters or other materials, they may be submitted to our board clerk, Tiana, for public record. With that, are there any members of the public who'd like to address the board at this time for agenda item-specific comments? I am seeing none, so unless somebody stops me, I will keep going to the next section of our agenda, which is reports. And we'll have an update on a post issuance tax compliant report, I believe, from Jen. Jen?
Yes, thank you, Justin. This is not an official report. This is a requirement that we need to do annually, which basically says we will follow all of the rules and regulations associated with and in accordance with any bonds that we have issued. If you read the actual statement, it, it says that we have followed all of those outlined rules and we will continue to do so.
Thank you, Jen. Are there any questions from board members for Jen about this mandated report? Seeing none, we'll move to board committee updates. And we'll begin with an update on the education committee. Suzanne?
The education committee has not met since our last meeting and we are still in the midst of determining and nailing down the dates for next year. And so as soon as we have those, we will let you know.
Thank you, Suzanne. Alice, any updates on finance and ops?
The finance and operations committee will meet next July 13th at 7:30 a.m. here in the district office.
Thank you, Alice. And Rich, any updates on policy?
If I am not mistaken, Tiana, we have a policy meeting set for July 11th. And she's nodding her head, so I am correct. Thank you.
Terrific. We'll now move to the liaison. Oh, yeah.
Good question, just for Rich. Just going through the board policy manual again, this, this past week. I just got a question for Rich. And if the policy committee is going to be soliciting any input or suggestions for revising the operating procedures manual? And if that's going to be taken on this next year? Or if that, or if you're looking for input? Or if that's just a purely a committee thing that you want to roll with?
We, it's a very good question, Carl. I believe, and looking at the operating procedures, it does fall under the policy committee to review. It makes sense for the policy committee to schedule a review and possibly individually as our members and then collaborate together to see what needs to be changed to make sure that our procedures and our policy do match. And we welcome any input from any of the board members for any suggestions or items that they feel that should be addressed. So we'll definitely take a look at that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Carl. Any other questions for board committee chairs before moving to liaison reports? Seeing none. Suzanne, do you have an update on True North?
I do. True North met on June 8th, 2022. It was kind of a big meeting. And so as you saw in our report, we had some scholarships, we had some recognition of some retirees. We talked about summer professional learning and social-emotional learning being a focus of professional learning for next year. Through the True North Professional Development, and they're going to have an SEL cohort that will launch in fall of 2020 for looking at system-wide SEL support for districts. We are still in the process of working on our strategic plan and a timeline, timeline for that work was provided to us. So there will be quite a bit more reported in the fall towards that. This is our first year of working within the new financial model. And so the financial true-up has happened this spring and districts are getting their final true-up bills. I believe those came out just last week. And we approved the budget for next year and also approved our superintendent's contract and the changes to the financial model that were vetted through the finance committee as a result of living with the new financial model. We have realized that that is going to be an ongoing process of renewal. So we call the document Fred. So Fred 2.0 has now been approved. And likely, the financial reference model document, Fred 3.0, will be coming to us next year as we continue to reflect on the changes that are needed. Our next meeting is August 31st, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. And I was fortunate enough to participate in the graduations for North Shore Academy Middle School and High School a few weeks ago, which is always a wonderful day.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions for Suzanne on True North or about Fred? Seeing none. Carl, do you have an update on the legislative front?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll run through this pretty quick. So first thing, first and foremost, I just want to thank John Noble for coming in today. Talk about some of the proposed legislative priorities. You guys can see that in the board agenda and we're happy to support. Really, it's just a reiteration of the other priorities that we've already submitted, but we're happy to do that. IASB submitted quite a bit of stuff this past month, really just an overview of all the bills that were under, under review right now. So the governor really is wearing out all his pens. He's been signing a lot of stuff into law. Over 85% of the bills impacting education that were sent to the governor have been signed into the law right now. So take a look at that list. It's a pretty long one, but some of the, are pretty minor things. Some of, some of them have a little bit more impact, but take a look at that. IASB also provided a breakdown of federal education budget request. It's, it's also pretty substantial, which is good news for us. It's also pretty substantial, which is good news for us, but it, again, it's just the president's submission of the budget and there's a lot more discussion to go on with that. Last item I have for you really is Ed Redd has put on a summer session on social emotional learning and it just kicked off last week. The first session was the why and Dr. Doug Bolton shared a good perspective of how stress can positively change us, both individually as a family and as a community. In future presentations, we're going to really learn how to help create resilience-enhancing communities from the families to the schools. So if you have the opportunity signing up for these sessions, it was a well-worth hour of your time. And other than that, go have a summer.
Thank you, Carl. Any questions for Carl? Seeing none. Rich, any updates on spirit?
At this time, there is no update from the spirit because we are all enjoying happy summer.
That's right. School's out for the summer, isn't it? Emily, some more story with Executive APT or do you have an update?
Yes, the APT exec board has not met. We'll pick it back up at the end of the summer.
Sounds good. Well, with that, we'll move to action items for tonight. May I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two final calendar?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions from board members about this action item? May I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Tiana. May I have a motion to approve the Director of Human Resources Enabling Agreement?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions from the board about this action item? Seeing none. May I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Mr. England?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Justin, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could Dr. McHugh say a few words about our new Director of Human Resources who is in the audience with us tonight?
Terrific. Yes, please.
Dr. Montgomery, thanks for making sure the vote went through before turning it over to me.
Exactly.
I can't, I can't mess this up now, Phil. Well, I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Phil Georgia. Phil was a teacher in Turkey, I believe, and also a high school math teacher and department chair before becoming a, both an assistant principal, then a principal in elementary and middle school. So he has K-12 covered. He now currently serves as the Director of Human Resources for Certified Staff in Palatine, District Fifteen. Much larger district, a more focused role, and now you will take over all the human resources in both District Sixty-seven and One-Fifteen. He comes with lots of experience. He serves on the IASPA, is the Illinois Association of School Personnel Administrators. He serves on the board as the website, website chair. And he is very connected. He knew our beloved Pete Teis, who is leaving us, and he's very well-connected with a lot of the other H.R. administrators in surrounding districts. So he brings experience, very student-centered, very staff-centered, and he's going to make a great addition to our team. So welcome, Phil.
Terrific. Thank you, Dr. McHugh, and welcome, Phil. We're excited that you're here in District Sixty-seven and One-Fifteen. With that, may I have a motion to approve our next action item, which is the Human Resources Report as presented?
So, so moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions from the board about the H.R. report? Seeing none. May I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now move to our consent agenda. As a reminder, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of a quick workers' compensation contract renewal, approval of a quick liability insurance contract renewal, minutes of regular meeting and workshop on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, minutes of an executive session on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a second? Thank you, Rich. Are there any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. May I have a roll call vote, please, Tiana?
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mr. England?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Tiana. We'll move to an update on Freedom of Information Act requests. There is one, Sheri Reed from Smart Procure is in progress. We'll now move to our second opportunity for public participation. At this, this opportunity is a quick reminder, can be about any topic on the agenda or not on the agenda. In the interest of time, I will not reiterate our board guidelines for public participation, subject to board policy two-dash-two-thirty. Are there any members of the public who'd like to address the board at this time? Looks like there is one, but I'm squinting.
It's Phil Georgia.
Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm Phil Georgia, your new Director of Human Resources. I'm honored and humbled to have been selected for this position and just want to thank you for the opportunity. I want to commend the leadership team for the process that they went through in selecting myself. It was a really neat opportunity to get to know the district and the leaders, so I felt like I had a really good sense of what I was getting into and that would be a really good fit for both of us. So I want to just commend everyone for that. Also, I want to commend you, the Lake Forest Schools have an incredible reputation and it's not by accident. So thank you for your leadership and everything you're doing to make it a wonderful and amazing district. I can't wait to jump in and join the team and contribute to our work and just very excited to be here. So thank you.
Thank you, Phil. We're excited that you're here.
Good evening. Ryan Martin, Dr. Georgia, welcome to you. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Montgomery for your advocacy for our students this year. Your notion, I guess around this time last year, of all in every day is not lost on our family. My sons had wonderful years. They were thrilled to be back in-person learning, both of them, Tierpath and Cherokee. We're now done at Cherokee, which is bittersweet. But thank you for your advocacy, your leadership. You've been a wonderful contribution to the community and thrilled to see that your family has assimilated so nicely. So enjoy your summer and thank you for a successful year. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ryan. All right. It does not look like there's any other public comments. Please shout if I am wrong.
You are correct.
We will move to announcements. We have one. On Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, is the next regularly scheduled District Sixty-seven Board of Education meeting, right here or there at seven P.M. in the West Campus Boardroom. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District Sixty-seven Board Meeting for June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay, I want Justin to stay.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.